All right, good evening, everybody. Today is October nineteenth. Calling this Committee on Committees meeting to order at six oh four. Tarian, it looks like we have Dr. Cotton and myself as members present. Has anybody reached out for any opportunity for public comment?
No.
Okay. And that leaves us the next agenda topic of approval of the minutes. I know. Go ahead.
Now, I was, if you wanted to say something, I was gonna make a move to approve the minutes. As presented.
And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Great, so the minutes are approved unanimously. That brings us to candidate interviews, and it looks like we have our. Interviewee. Michelle, how are you?
I'm good. How are you guys doing today?
Hi.
Doing great. Thanks for joining us. You're right on time.
Oh, good. I was like, oh, no, Zoom wants to update. Oh, no.
We've had that. We've had that ourselves. So. I'll just give you a little bit of background as to some of the process. So just, you know, typically what we do is we, we have our interviews here at the Committee on Committees and provided everything goes well. I see you have a nice recommendation letter. Looks like from a fellow. Committee member. Just, I lost the name.
From Ann, I think.
Yes. And provided everything goes well here, we'll make a recommendation to the. Town council meeting or the town council as a whole, and at that point, we will. You would, if, as long as everything goes well there, you would be a voting member or however, you know, alternate. I'm not sure what the position is. As I'm talking, but you're more than welcome to go to the meetings and know what they're working on and, you know, and we'll be sure to let them know, you know, how the progress goes and you'll be told as well, but it's, uh, that's, that's generally the process. Do you have any questions on the process itself?
No, thank you. You're very clear. I appreciate it.
No problem. You know, we, we very much appreciate people like you who come in, volunteer their time for, you know, boards and committees like this. So thank you very much for being here. And I see, Tarian, I don't know if you've got, Mr. Ossberger has signed in, so we've got a full quorum. Right? And so go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself. It looks like you're applying for the Art Advisory Committee. And I'll, I'll let you take it from there. What, what makes you interested in that?
So, um, hi, everybody. Michelle Polgar is my name. I pronounce her she and her, and I am recently relocated to Connecticut from Austin, Texas, where I lived for a very, very long time and raised three children and served in Austin on, as an arts commissioner for the city of Austin, which is now the 10th largest city in the country, and served there for 10 years and have always been interested and passionate about public service and public service and arts and cultural engagement. Sorry, college students, and arts and cultural engagement. I work at UConn. I am the managing director for Connecticut Repertory Theater here at UConn. And I also am very active in my, and I live in Glastonbury, and this is one of the questions that I had for Ann and for the rest of the committee, and I actually talked to the mayor a little bit about this too, as I spend more time in Mansfield than I do in Glastonbury, and I'm in Glastonbury because there was no housing available in Mansfield. Let me talk about that. So, but I spend my time here and I'm really interested as a, a member of the community at UConn in how this university, which is sitting in the middle of a beautiful town with fourteen thousand five hundred people, how we can work together and exchange and what resources the university can provide and what information we can share. And so it was really important to me to, A, not take a spot away from a community member who lives here, who wants to be here, and also to leverage whatever my presence at UConn can provide for the town of Mansfield in support of arts and culture for the city.
Well, that's, that's great, and I'm glad you brought up the, the address, but I, you know, we were lucky enough to have a very professional town clerk who's provided us with the Arts Advisory. Committee charge, and there's not a residential requirement. I mean, it's, it's exactly the kind of stuff you're talking about wanting to do, you know. Come, uh, events sponsored by private organizations and, and encourage interest and participation in the arts and you're certainly in a good key position at UConn to be able to do that, and it sounds like from the recommendation you, you may already be doing some of that, and so I'm, I'm very, very thankful to have you here, and I, I don't have any more questions. You've really covered everything for me. Um, Dr. Cotton or Mr. Ossberger, do either one of you have any questions you wanna ask?
I didn't have any either. Once we got the residency. Charter clarified, that was it. You're embedded in this community by virtue of working here and influencing. Many people who are on campus as well as off campus as relates to the arts, so. It works for me.
I'm also in conversations with the Mansfield Downtown Partnership, trying to figure out how we could and what spaces are open and how we can open the doors to get some activity in spaces that are not currently leased and things like that too, and talking about the cultural district for Mansfield and what that might look like and how I can use my past experience to help facilitate that kind of work.
That's great.
After Austin, Texas, you know, that is after your experience base there, that, that was all I needed to hear from the.
Nobody came to the meeting. I, I visited with pitchforks. It was really, I was like, what? Where are the pitchforks? I'm so confused. No, I love being here. I really, really love it.
And I, I, I have to say, UConn being in town is one of the draws to keep me here because of all the different cultural and arts offerings that, you know, you can, you can take, you know, I have kids and it's just a five-minute drive down the road kind of deal, and it's not, I don't have to go to New York. I don't have to go to Boston. We have some really stellar amazing things right here, and to be able to have you who probably can do a much better job promoting these things and, and tell us what's happening. Um, on the committee would, I think, be a, a benefit for everyone, so. Um, I don't see, uh, Mr. Ossberger with any questions, and so I think that.
Well, actually, Sam.
Oh, there he is.
Um, presently, I'm, I'm not, I don't have a provision for um, my camera, which I don't understand why it's not working, but also, um, a way for me to get my hand to raise anymore. Uh, but that being said, Michelle, that's, I look forward to working with you. I'm working on a project right now that is kind of up your alley. I really don't want to divulge it right now. Uh, but it's a fairly large-scale project that's working on. It's gonna work. Uh, it's gonna encompass the whole region.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah, Mr. Ossberger is, is, he's got a big passion for the arts, and so I'm, I'm glad he is hinting at it, and I know he's been working on this, so I'm excited to see what he comes up with.
If you do get, if you do get on the committee, uh, Ann Williams knows full well what, what this is all about, so she could probably apprise you of what this little project is.
Terrific. Look forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah.
And, uh, Mr. Ossberger, because of the, I just appreciate you being here. Just speak up. There's no need to raise hands or anything like that. Just appreciate you being here, okay?
Yeah, I don't know. This, this, um, this took on its own little problem, the last town council meeting, and I still haven't figured out why, even though my camera light is on in my computer, uh, for some reason, it just does not want to work.
No worries.
Technology is great until it isn't.
Um, and I'm, Michelle, I may have already asked if you have any questions for us. I know, well, I guess I asked about the process, but if you have any questions, you know, we're, uh, right now, please let us know. Otherwise, uh, you're more than welcome to, to stay on. Observe, this is a public hearing. It doesn't look like we have any more interviews set up. We're gonna next move to a, a committee charge. Um, and and, um, we'll, we'll get this on the next town council agenda after we, we do our vote.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much for your time, and I'm glad I was able to join you. My son has his first concert on campus, so I'm gonna dip and go do that.
Oh.
It's like, yes, convince him to come to UConn. Like, thank you, on behalf of everybody's pocketbook. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm in a meeting right now. What's going on?
Oh.
What am I going to see? My son's playing in the Symphonic Orchestra.
Awesome. Awesome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time, everybody. I hope you have a wonderful night. Take care.
Thank you, you too. I'd rather be going to that concert than, not, not that I don't like to talk about the charge, but.
Yeah, the charge is really important and really special, and then the concert will be here later too, so. Always come late.
All right. So.
Mara Joy will be here tomorrow.
Sorry about that, everyone. I just got a phone call for a home warranty, to which I asked them, what warranty are you gonna offer me in my seventy-five-year-old home?
Right.
I love those families, huh?
Okay, so it looks like, uh, we don't have our other uh, interviewee here, and we have no old business, which brings us to Lon, Transportation Advisory Committee. Proposed revised charge, and I'll just introduce this by saying that um, I, as a member of the Transportation Advisor Committee, I have been guilty of this, where you know, we have, uh, meetings, uh, quarterly. Um, and I have missed some, and that, uh, I know that I'm not the only one who has missed some. And we have an issue of reaching a full quorum where we can pass any of the meeting minutes and, and take other, uh, you know, action with, with the authority based on the, the chart, uh, the, the charge. And I, and this did recently already come through us, but it, this, this particular aspect of it was not considered. And, um, I know that, uh, I think that what I'd like to do is let Lon, you take over and explain what you're kind of thinking and what you'd like to propose and and, uh, just, I wanna say that I am probably gonna be supportive of whatever you have to say, so that way we can make sure that the Transportation Advisor Committee is given the um, the full authority that it needs to, 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 to carry out its charge. So go ahead with that. What is yours? I wonder if there's, it looks like he may have frozen.
Frozen.
We don't have any problem with the, the. Um, there are five, uh, public and four members from the two uh, policy boards, two from planning and zoning and two from the council. So we've been talking. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you were just frozen for a second, and I think what we just caught was that there's nine members total, five from the public and four split between the town council and planning and zoning.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I got a little note saying that things are unstable, so stop me if I have to go back. I, I don't have any control over that, far as I can tell. Um, so we've been talking with Sam and, and, uh, and the people on the committee about ways to solve this uh, problem of never having a quorum. Not that we're making great, you know, pull policy decisions, but it is difficult. We can't, we don't have a quorum to even.
Lon, if you can hear me. Yeah, just for a second there.
Okay.
Um. So I, I, I think we've got a good understanding that the, there needs to be a, a, a change. Would am I correct in that the change you were looking for to possibly have is the five public members and then the four planning and zoning town council members right now would no longer be voting, but rather like advisory in, in the wings kind of deal?
Well. That's the simplest solution, I guess, would be to have, um, the members of the two policy boards be non-voting. So then our, our quorum would be five.
Well, I'm sorry. You froze again.
Oh, boy. Okay, so I'll keep trying.
Okay.
So, the, um, if we had, if the council and planning zoning members were not voting, they would still be members and we'd still meet and discuss and do whatever we normally do, but when it came to a quorum, to a.
When it came, you froze it. When it came to a quorum.
Or, or making a recommendation, um, we would have, only need to have three of the five people present to, to do that. As a corollary to that, uh, there were a couple of other things that we talked about. One was.
If, if you can hear me, you froze it. Correlate, correlated items. The first one was.
The, the first one was one member each from the, uh, policy boards. So now that, that would be seven members uh, total. For, so we would need four for a quorum. Um, and the other one is even a hybrid of that where um, if the policy board members showed up, they would count in the quorum that night. So if you had one council member show up and nobody else, then we'd have six members on the committee and it would require three or four, whichever i- is appropriate. So that's sort of, uh, where we are, and we would appreciate if there's a way we.
Yeah, no, I we froze again, but I, I think we got the gist of it, and I was just gonna cover it again to make sure, and if I have anything wrong, please, uh, interrupt me, whatever, whatever is simplest, but the, the three options, it sounds like, oh, uh, if, if I'm, if I'm boiling them down, is to just have the four town council planning and zoning members be advisory, non-voting. The second one would be to have one person from each represented that could vote. And the third one would be to have the four mem, the four members split between town council, planning and zoning only be voting and count towards the quorum if they show. Okay, perfect. Um, now, this is where, Sarah Ann, if I can put you on the spot, Ms. Chain. Um, the third option, is that something that is done on any other committee, or is that something that's doable where for the purposes of quorums and having the meeting be able to go forward and pass the minutes and other things of, of, of committee nature? Could we have, um, it, the quorum only count the voting members of the committee once they actually are there?
No.
Okay, I think, I didn't think so. All right, so then that leaves me to ask, uh, my fellow town council members, do you either one feel more comfortable with having, um, there still be the four membership representation from planning and zoning and town council split two and two? But as advisory, uh, rather than voting members, or would you have thoughts on one person be, being the one, uh, member of the committee who, you know, from, from each entity?
I'm not sure I'm understanding completely, um. Does it, let, let's see if I'm understanding. Okay, so rather than, um, the four P Z Z and town council, is it possible to, um, say that whomever is present on the meeting day that constitutes the quorum? Is that? Or am I taking this way off?
We, that was option number three, and from what Ms. Chain says, that's not something that I think is permissible with the Roberts Rules of Order um, or done on any other committee. So it, whoever is named to the committee as a member has to count towards the quorum regardless of whether they're there or not. And I can tell you, I have hesitation having one person from each because then you have, you know, is it gonna be a Democrat? Is it gonna be Republican? And is it gonna, you know, there, there's an issue of, I, I think fairness in that, and I'm comfortable with there being four advisory members who are non-voting, non-quorum. Uh, participants. Uh, and, um, because at the end of the day, the reason why I feel like the, the Transportation Advisory Committee, why it's beneficial to have both entities represented in some fashion or capacity is that they're making recommendations that will eventually end up in front of the town council or planning and zoning, and if you have advisory members who are there and able to give input, I think that would be sufficient enough for the purposes of helping the Transportation Advisory Committee. Because I can tell you, I'm not the expert in the meetings that I've gone to. I'm listening to Lon. I'm listening to the staff. I'm listening to Alex or whoever else may be, um, talking, and at the end of the day, I, I can, I can give a glimmer of, of insight into what I believe other council members may feel is appropriate, say for pedestrian safety on a certain project or something like that. But I'm not, I'm certainly not the one who I feel is gonna be um, able to provide the expert input as to how that public safety could look, you know, versus Lon, who's the chair and the, the staff members who are, you know, are, are paid experts through the, as town. But, um, I think that that's a, that's a shift, and we'd have to, uh, so with that explanation, uh, Dr. Cotton, how, and, uh, Mr. Ossberger, how is it? How do the two of you feel? Uh, and, and we don't have to make a decision on any of this tonight, but I do wanna at least put it on the Committee on Committees radar so that we can then pass it up to, uh, the town council, and based on what we get there, we may make recommendations of a change to then send over to planning and zoning. I wouldn't want to make any changes at the town council level uh, that doesn't include planning and zoning's input. The, I, I don't think we, Ms. Chain.
I didn't, you didn't have to stop mid-sentence. You could.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't think we need to have their input, like in terms of, they don't, I don't think have a say in the charge and how the quorum and the um, committee is, is staff or, you know, membership is made. But I, I, I wouldn't want to take something away from them without at least getting their input, so. I recognize.
Thank you. Chair Bruder. Um, I just wanted to prod for a moment. Um, there are several other um, advisory committees throughout the town, um, none of which have a counselor or planning and zoning rep on it. Um, I don't know the history. Lon could speak to that better than I, if there is one about why, um, why council and planning and zoning members are put on, and there's, so there may be a very intentional or perhaps required reason that I'm not aware of, but I just wanted to put that in there as, um, sort of a question for you all to think about, is that it actually isn't typical for these advisory committees to have, um, counselor, planning, planning and zoning representation on it.
Lon, do you have any historical knowledge as to why these four members?
Yes, and I hope you know, stop me again if my internet connection doesn't work. Is it working now?
It is, and I very much appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have had this, uh, computer closer to my Wi-Fi sender, you know, it, it's, it's, it's out in the other room. Well, when the Transportation Advisory Committee was formed, it was because the council was being paralyzed by a really controversial bunch of road projects. And so they were staying and arguing late into the night about turning lanes and about speed and about things that, that, um, really they wanted more input on from other people so that they didn't have to do all of the talking about it. And so they've, we formed a Transportation Advisory Committee, and we put two council members and two planning zoning members on because it was worried that it was going to end up being a really important recommendations being made and, and neither the council nor the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to pass that to just public members. I don't think we've made a controversial recommendation for the last fifteen years. So I think that, that got through a very difficult time, but I, I don't see that as being a, a particular needed, uh, time.
I, I, that makes sense, because that lines up with, uh, uh, we've had discussions about having some of this, uh, uh, pedestrian safety discussions at, at, at town council agenda, but one of the, um, feedback from other members has always been, well, that's something that the Transportation Advisory Committee does, and we don't wanna get ourselves down in the weeds because we're not the experts. We want that input, and I, and I credit you and the, everyone else, that the recommendations you have made have been nothing but, um, uh, professional. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of thought and a lot of work put into it, and, you know, I'm very excited for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that is in concert with our or the draft that's in, uh, that's in compliance or is, is taken into account in our conservation master plan. I don't think I'm saying this right, but either way, it's coming before the town council and has been passed by planning and zoning, and so that's, that's exciting, and, um, okay, that, that makes sense, and I think that because we have all these other advisory committees that advise us, but we're not staffing them with town council members or planning and zoning, that we can still continue to have members who can attend as members of the public or as, um, you know, to, uh, Ms. Chain, what would the proper title be called for? Um, like, a non-voting member? Non-voting member?
Sure, the term you're looking for is non-voting ex officio.
Okay. So, we could how, how, uh, Dr. Cotton, Mr. Ossberger, how would you feel if we made a recommendation to the town council that the four members become um, ex officio members? So that they can still go, they can still participate if they, if they uh, are called upon to, for any insight as to anything that's needed, but they're not voting members. They're not gonna be influencing the recommendation that then eventually shows up in front of them anyway.
I'm in concurrence with that. Non-voting ex officio.
Perfect. Mr. Ossberger, are you in agreement with that? And what I would say is, I can make the motion, because I'd like to make the motion to have the discussion at the town council meeting, but not make the actual recommendation with, without the caveat of it also going before the planning and zoning before we finalize it.
Huh. So is it the, is it an ex officio member, but is it like a uh, like on zoning where if someone is not there, then they're seated?
I don't think so. I think what, it would just act as, we would be like myself as a Transportation Advisory Committee member, right now I can vote. But if I don't show up and others don't show up, they don't have a quorum, in this capacity, I would be able to show up and provide any kind of insight as to, you know, projects that are being worked on that the town, and I, I can give a glimmer of insight as to what other members are talking about at the town council meetings or, um, certainly it was helpful that we got information from, I know that it wasn't from a planning and zoning member, but it was helpful to get information that, you know, this is some, the, the bicycle and pedestrian draft plan is coming from planning and zoning to the town council and that the Transportation Advisory Committee members and staff are involved in it. And so that they. And so that they could, it could be a flow of information between the two entities or the three entities. Where's my fingers there? But. We wouldn't. Impact the the issues of the the quorum in terms of the vote at the Transportation Advisory Committee level. But I, I'm comfortable with this because I'd still get a vote. And so like right now, I'm getting two votes. I'm getting one at the committee level, I'm getting one at the town council level. And I'm fine just having the one at the town council level where everything can get reviewed and discussed thoroughly. Based on these recommendations from our. Great volunteers who are experts in in what they're working on, who have much more. Knowledge in the, in the day-to-day workings of this kind of stuff than than I do for sure.
Oh, no, Sam, what I meant was is that would would, because there, I believe what I'm understanding is is there's an. Issue of not having a quorum, and as an ex officio member within that. Maybe slide us into a role as an alternate and then reduce the problem of not having a quorum. I guess that's what my question was.
Oh, that's actually, I I get that. I'm sorry, I didn't understand it that way, but that's another good way is that they maybe the four members could be alternates. I don't know. And then if they happen to show up and somebody from the public doesn't, then they could do that, but.
You know, they're taking care of the problem of not having a quorum.
Yeah. Well. What do you, what would you prefer?
I, I wonder what Lon would think too.
I think that gets back into the realm of what Sarah was saying, we probably couldn't do. Because. You know, the structure of the committee has to be a certain way, and if you have. A, a non-voting member that then becomes a voting member, I think that's gonna be too confusing.
Yeah. And now that we're talking about, or now that you say that too, if I'm a member and I just come once a year. And I'm not, you know, as an alternate, the idea is you'd still be going to these meetings and and staying on top of them. As a, but if I come once. And I happen to be able to vote because somebody else isn't there, I don't think that that's necessarily fair either. Especially since I still get to vote on any of the recommendations because they're still gonna come before the town council. They're still gonna come before the planning and zoning. So I, go ahead.
Sam, I was gonna say that, I know that on zoning that. When that situation arises, and let's just say for some odd reason, four or five of ex officio members were to show up. I know that the chair, at the time of the beginning of the meeting, decides who is seated and who is not. Thereby determining who can vote and who cannot.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think that works for them in the sense that those, my understanding is the alternates are still showing up and they're still. Doing the work and being prepared just in case they're called upon to vote. But in the situation that we've seen with the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I, and like I said, I'm guilty of this myself, I don't make every meeting. And if I'm, if I'm just happen to be there and. Cause I. Then I'm voting on something that I'm not as knowledgeable or as invested in just because I I haven't been going. It's is my concern, and that Lon, are you, you're not having as much of an issue with the public volunteers? It's more the four of us that are from these two other entities, is that correct?
Yes. We've never had two from planning and zoning. And I can't remember when we've had two from the council. So we're basically looking at. One person out of the four that may attend.
Yeah, I think I'm guilty of that because I believe I'm supposed to be on that. I believe I'm on Transportation Advisory Committee. And the last meeting I was supposed to attend and I was away. Out of town at the last minute, I couldn't get back in time.
Yeah, and it's happened to me too. I mean, it's. It's a, it's, it's certainly not a reflection on the importance that I feel is on the, on the committee, and that's why I. I'm glad that we're having this on this agenda, even though we just recently did the charge, I would. Typically just say, okay, if it's something that can wait, we've just did that, let's focus on another charge, because Lon, what we're trying to do here is. Go through all the charges in every single five thousand six hundred twenty-two committees? Ms. Chain? No, I don't know how many there is, but there's a lot, and we want to have them all organized and revamped and at least touched upon so that. You know, the, if if things have been operating one way, but the charge is another, we can get the charge in line with what's actually happening type deal, so.
Well, it certainly would be our intent to keep. All four people getting agendas, and then if something is, comes up that you're particularly. Want to be involved with, then you would. Come to that meeting or attended virtually or whatever.
Yeah, no, I, I think, so. I think that I'd like to make a motion unless anyone else has any other comments or questions and my. Just to give you an idea, my motion is not going to be much more than make a recommendation. That we have this as a discussion, you know, at the town council level. Okay, hearing anything, I'm gonna recommend that. This committee. Request the. Membership of quorum. On the Transportation Advisory Committee. Be placed on a future agenda in the near, near future. And Sarah Ann, I'm not saying any of this written, I'm just making it up as I go and I apologize, I know that's harder.
It's okay.
Okay. Can you read me what you have?
Okay. Move to recommend that the committee and committees request. Transportation Advisory Committee membership be placed on. A future town council agenda.
I think, I think we start with that, and so from at the, and I think that's period done. And I think that what we do there is put it on their radar so that we can. I just don't, I, I don't want this to, when Lon, the next meeting for Transportation Advisory is in January? Okay, so we, we've got a little bit of time, go ahead.
Do you want to word it where you're actually referring discussion? Of Transportation Advisory Committee membership to the council?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, okay.
Do I have a second?
Let it be written, okay.
It'll be done.
Let it be done.
I don't know, my dad says that, it's from some movie.
It's from some movie?
Yeah, is it Ten Commandments?
Ten Commandments.
Yeah, okay. We have watched that quite a bit. Seconded by Dr. Cotton. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we'll get this, my goal is to have it fixed or an answer for you, Lon, before the January meeting. Hopefully, all of us here who are running for town council will continue to be on town council and will be able to continue to work on this. Very important issue, so thank you for being here again, Lon, and thank you so much for your patience with. Explaining the situation. I I think you did it better than I could have been. I I know this is another Thursday night, but I thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, Ron. Good night, Lon.
Okay, so with that, it leads us to new business B on the agenda, Arts Advisory Committee. I would like to make a recommendation that Michelle. Holger. Be appointed to the Arts Advisory Committee, her term ending three, one, twenty, twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Great, it's unanimous, and we don't have any other business other than a one final motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so all those in favor, say aye for adjournment?
Aye.
Double hand. All right, thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Beautiful evening, huh?
Have a, have a good evening, all.
Thank you, bye.